Call the Kerrville City Council Workshop to order on January 24th at 4:00. Is Ms. Gill here?
Ms. Gill is going to go beginning second. We're going to start with the inclement weather update, if that's all right with Mayor and Council. Staff is prepared and Chief Maloney is going to lead us off on that.
All right, very good. Let's just let Chief do both. He could probably do a great job.
No doubt, he always does. How are y'all?
Evening, Chief.
So, good evening. So, thank you all for having us here. We want to present tonight a little bit about the inclement weather and some of the things that we've done over the last two years. Beginning this process, this is not an all-inclusive list that you're going to see. We obviously do a lot more behind the scenes, but these are some mitigation actions that we've taken over the past two years. And really getting together, we got together as a team over the last few weeks, kind of building this, and it was really, what you're about to see is really impressive. So I was very impressed with the overall, the work that each organization is doing as we're continuing to kind of prepare the city of Kerrville. So a little bit on the weather events. So this, what we kind of took a look at overall that we've seen, so the snow and ice, of course, in 2021, we had the winter storm Uri. 2022, we have winter storm Landon. We had rain and flooding events in October 2018. We had those regional floods, remember those, in Kimball County of the junction. We've had hail and high winds, May of 2020. We've had power outages, 2021 during winter storm Uri, and localized outages since then. We've had fiber cuts in February 2019 with Windstream and the extreme heat and wildfires of summer 2022. So one thing we can always prepare for when we talk about emergency management is that history will repeat itself. So we're going to continue to see these in the future. So a lot of the mitigation actions we have taken over the last two years that you're going to see is really trying to address these. So we saw some of our gaps of what we needed to do, and so we've addressed those. So I'm going to talk about those in general, and then some of the department directors are going to come up and talk about their department and some of the things that they've done also. So, the city general. So in general, Rave is our mass communication. You remember, we, y'all approved the purchase of that that we did about a year and change ago, and so now we have our mass communication tool called Rave. And that's our ability to immediately notify our citizens and all of employees and any emergencies, or just be able to use to contact them. We've also, since then, been awarded a $4.68 million for generators replacement and purchase by the FEMA Hazard Mitigation Grant through TDEM. We're still waiting on some delivery, but we were awarded that grant. We have been a, we have approved a public safety facility, so with a fully functional emergency operations center that'll be coming online in two years. We've upgraded our public safety communication to a trunk 700 megahertz communication. We just completed that project. We have met with AT&amp;T representatives regarding our first net operations and emergency management support. And so now we've also established a process to reserve a cellular on wheels, what they call a COW, in the event, we'll say, the hit, like the Fourth of July, we had some difficulties getting out and communicating between staff or between emergency personnel. So in the future, they'll be able to set up these COWs, and then, so we'll be able to have better communication restricted to public safety. We've established an agreement with LCRA to utilize Looner radios that we've used in this past Fourth of July, Mobile Command Unit and other resources. And we've also provided early decision for delayed start of employees, closing of facilities, and also evaluating our boards and committees. So a lot of things we saw during Uri and since then, so overall, the city has addressed. Emergency management. So, emergency management, we have submitted a FEMA application for a citywide mass communications using what they call IPALS. So y'all are familiar with that, so we're still waiting to hear back from FEMA for our approval. Currently, the county has that ability, and so when we get the IPALS system, that'll, you do not have to sign up. There are certain specific things that we can get that notification to you if you're in this geographic area, regardless if you're a citizen or a visitor. We have early meetings now with Texas Department of Emergency Management State Operations Center and Kerr County Emergency Management Coordinator. We have determined our readiness level now and provide a situation report, what we call a sit rep, to city's inclement weather teams. So we do that early on the front of these weather incidents. We've established joint incident command, so myself and Chief McCall for all emergency management responses. Our first working together was winter storm Uri. We have renewed agreement with emergency management and resource. They're formerly BCFS, now we've utilized their Mobile Command Unit. You've probably seen that at the Fourth of July event, for the use of their Mobile Command Unit and other resources. We're currently, actually just got that rental agreement today. The fire chief, so I have completed what they call an infrastructure disaster management certificate, and so that program was put on by TEACs, and that addressed Public Works, electric power systems, water and wastewater utilities, and hospital and healthcare organizations during emergency disasters. Turn it over to Stuart. I sidetracked. All right, PIO. Obviously, information is crucial when we have these situations. I don't need to tell you that, that's pretty obvious, but, so we have, we have a situation where we can contact multiple media outlets immediately, and we've got a wide variety of radio, newspaper, television, and local and regional outlets that we reach with our emails and so forth, not just in Kerrville, but San Antonio and Austin as well. So, when we have inclement weather or we have a threat of inclement weather, we can get that message out quickly. We have a Facebook, Twitter, city website. Facebook has been tremendous as far as the last storm, and really even the storm before that, and we've grown quite a bit on our Facebook followers since then. We're actually at 13,500 now, close to that, so we've got a huge following, which, you know, we're 25,000 person city, so more than half. But we do Facebook, Twitter, city website, and we haven't been doing Twitter as much lately, but in an emergency situation, we certainly will. We have the ability to broadcast video messaging from the mayor, from the city manager, or from emergency management. During the first storm two years ago, we had five days of broadcasts from the city manager, and I think everybody appreciated that. We kept everybody up to date with what had gone on during the day as far as responding to situations. We'll also be utilizing Rave for mass communication for Kerrville residents, and we have the, this is really important, we have the ability to create mass emails and to send them to our water customers, because a lot of them check their email every day.
What does Rave stand for again?
I'm a little. Rave is a company, that's our mass communication tool.
Okay, so it's not an acronym.
Very similar to the Code Red. So Code Red is one, Rave is another company that we utilize.
Okay, so, not an acronym.
So that's where we stand. We do have the, we do have the ability to reach quite a few people quickly, and obviously that's vital, as we know from the last two situations. So, any questions? Are we taking questions? Okay, IT is next.
Well, Council, how are you? As Chief Maloney mentioned earlier, we, we did a collaborative effort to implement Rave, and we've done that. Some of the operational changes in IT, traditionally, we have one staff member assigned when there's an event, now we have two. So there'll be assistants administrators to work on the backend side and more the personnel support, you know, so if an employee has an issue with their laptop, we'll be able to focus on that, plus the backend stuff. We've also configured our phone system to be able to support more information hotlines. We did that for the food hotline, the COVID hotline, so we've expanded our capacity, sorry, capacity for that. We've also increased our work from home capabilities and capacity, so now we have an idea of what it's going to take if we have all, most if not all of our employees working from home. So we've made some changes in our backend infrastructure to support that. And we've also reviewed our partnerships, our agreement with some of our partners here in Kerrville, BCFS, Hill Country Telephone Company, and LCRA now, so that we can utilize their workspace if none of our city facilities are up and operational. So we've been in communication for the past year with them, and it's something that if we need their facilities, we're ready to go for that. Yeah, and most importantly for IT and OES, we're kind of that on-hand support at the emergency operations center. So, you need us, you call us, and we'll be there.
I'd like to say they'd save the best for last, but there are a few more after us. We did, the streets, so Public Works covers streets, water, wastewater collection and distribution system, and also laboratory. Most of all those divisions had something to do with, or some improvement that we were able to find in the system that allowed us to move forward. We'll start with streets. They had a collaborative effort with TechStot. TechStot and K Pub, I did not list the K Pub on here, because we just, we worked with them a little bit on identifying where the outages might be and how we may be able to get there, and what grids we're on, and when they turn power off, how can we expect to see that? So, we did have some discussion with them, but it was hard to kind of incorporate that into what, you know, what benefit came out of it, other than a lot of generators ended up coming out of it, and that's, we'll cover that in a little while. But the streets effort, we did talk to TechStot, worked with them on, hey, what are y'all's priority areas versus what does the city need to cover? They made it clear to us that their priority areas are, it could be Highway 27 and I-10. There's some areas within the city that they would appreciate some help with, and we said, yeah, that makes sense to us, you know, keep the big stuff open, and we'll help y'all with what we can within the city. They are going to have some remote stockpiles along their corridors to be able to de-ice some of the areas out in their, in their distribution system, and then also they'll have stuff here at their city yard. They've increased their fuel capacity at the yard and the stockpiles of material that they have there that we potentially can use if we have an outage of either one of those two. So, they're good to work with, and, you know, we really felt like we made some progress with teaming with them. For the streets building itself, there was a permanent generator installed there last year, or two years ago, y'all remember that? That was pretty much Public Works headquarters. It's open 24 hours a day, like most of our divisions are, but that was kind of a central location. People used it, staff used it as a warming station, but didn't have a generator, so there was times, they were able to take baths and showers in there and so on. So we did need a generator there, and that has been built, it's built, it's been installed, it's operational, it operates once a week, so the guys are very excited about that. It says no other major changes there, but we, some of these things we've been doing over the past years, we just kind of re-affordified them, brought them up to speed, and wanted to let y'all know what our standard operating procedure is there. So, we stockpile material of magnesium chloride, and that's what we use to put down on the streets for de-icing, mix that with chat, cover the bridges. There's about 31 areas in town that get specific attention, and we're having a, we name those, identify where they're at. We, during an ice event, we'll increase the ice, or flooding. We've looked at this from both perspectives, because that's something that we get called out on pretty regularly, flooding, also big rain events. So not only an ice event, but any kind of climate weather that we would be responding to. If it's going to happen overnight, we'll increase our staffing hours to 24 hours a day. That's a three, three eight-hour shifts for our staff there. So, in that, the street superintendent, who's now Joel right now, he probably deserves to get it named personally, he goes out at about 4:00 in the morning, and he does an assessment with help from PD. A bunch of their patrol officers will call in if there's icing in the area, they'll actually go out and assess them themselves, they'll get a report out to the city manager at 5:00 in the morning and say, hey, this is what the conditions are, y'all get to make the, or he gets to talk to councilmen, y'all get to make a decision on how the city's going to move forward for that day. But that is a big effort, very early in the morning, often it goes all night long, so. In need of that, we make, we have got some chains for our equipment now that allows us to get over that icy condition and get that material out. I talked about earlier, 31 locations we pre-treat before the storm. We do have additional gas and diesel storage. We do store salt, or rock salt for putting out on sidewalks and things. Parks will be more about that later, but we do store some in the street department as well. We prepare all of our chainsaws and barricades. Barricade's more for flooding than this event. Usually, these ice events or any high wind events knocks down some trees, and so we're out there either removing that tree or pushing it to the side so the traffic can continue to flow. We're always ready to deploy flooding, barricade flooding. And we've installed some flashing lights at some of the low-water crossings. Right now, we have two of them, one at Fourth Street and one at Hill Country Drive. If it's inundated with water, that light automatically comes on and warns motorists, hey, there's water over the roadway, you need to take caution. The rest of them, we go ahead and still put out barricades. We're ramping that up to do a few more crossings, but not, not all of them in the city yet have had that. So Public Works in general, we also provide professional, or educational outreach. We found during Uri that we drained our water system pretty easily, well, I shouldn't say easily. One of the educational components that we do is we're trying to teach people not to hoard water. That particular event, on a normal water consumption day, we use around 3 million gallons a day. We saw about 12 million gallons a day use that, that day. And so you can imagine, it drains all of our tanks, it drains all of our infrastructure. When you have power going on and off, we can't keep up with it. We also had some big lines break, fire lines break in different buildings that weren't always being monitored, and that, they're six-inch lines typically, four to six-inch lines, and that adds to the additional consumption. So, educational through those things of saying, hey, please don't fill up your bathtubs, just take, take some if you want, if you feel like you need to store some water, store some, but say, you know, leave some in the system as well for everybody's normal use. Change operation 24 hours, talked about that a little bit already. And ordered some software for mapping main breaks. We've, David Barrera has been instrumental in implementing a new software. We're able to monitor where the main breaks are occurring and able to track our work order system a lot better. So when we do those presentations like we did last week with Council at the workshop, we know this line is a problem for us, and we're able to better represent that to y'all and show you how often and where they are, where those brakes are. So, that's been a big, that has actually been very helpful for us. On the water side, we completed EPA risk assessment, report in May of 2021, an emergency response plan in September of 21. Those are mandated by the state. We renewed them, got them up to, up to speed, which is something we typically do, happened to fall within this, and we're able to use some of the lessons learned from Uri to do that as well. Senate Bill 3 requires our water system to maintain operations in a 24-hour power outage. Now, it's quite, quite a challenge, to be honest with you, as to how do you do that? How do you get water to everybody for 24 hours when you don't have any power? Power is our primary source of getting that water out of the river or out of the wells and bringing it up. So the answer to that was, deal with K Pub a little bit, find out what systems, are we going golf line if we do have a power outage, or if they're browned out, not a complete blackout? If they had any control over it, what would they be? And then we, Scott Loveland actually helped a lot with getting some mobile generator grant for mobile generator, and we were able to find more mobile generators to, at well sites and also pump sites to facilitate that extra, that prolonged power outage. So far, we have two of those generators right now, they're both at the water treatment plant. They're mobile generators, and we are outfitting the areas for the, to make connections at different sites, so we can pull that generator if we're having, if we need a well operating or a pump station, we can move that generator from spot to spot to get it to, to power that unit. Now, obviously, that doesn't get everything in operation, but it, we were able to satisfy the Senate bill by doing that. They did, we did some quick starts, or excuse me, auto starts for those, the stationary generators that we already have. We installed three additional quick connection for mobile generators that we talked about there at City Hall. City Hall one has one library, Travis Street Booster Station also has a quick, quick connection for them. At the water treatment plant, direct feed to K Pub, we, what we talked about a little bit earlier, talking to K Pub. Luckily, the wastewater treatment plant, or the water reclamation plant, is on a, same as a hospital over there, the VA Hospital, and so it is not on a list that allows for rolling outages. The water treatment plant is the main feed there, it crosses the Guadalupe River, and so they also do not, they try to keep that one active as much as possible, because it serves everything on the south side of the river. So, we identified those and were able to come up with some solutions around that. We provide well installation, coordinate with. Too far, sorry, thank you. Coordinate with Peterson Regional Medical Center. There was a, there was a time in there that our water system was really low on water, and the pressure was getting down low enough that they were getting concerned for their dialysis unit, and they need water to do the dialysis for people, literally lives are in jeopardy there. And so we've been talking to them and working with them and say, hey, if this is so critical that maybe y'all have some water on site, that this is allowed, that we have a little breathing room here, where somebody's life's not in jeopardy if we have a blip on our water stream. So we've been working with them to, to address that as well. New meters and monitoring well loss in real time, so that's pretty odd, pretty self-explanatory. SCADA that reports tank levels. Our SCADA system is what we use, so we can see it on the computer system, on a computer screen, where the tank levels at, which pumps are running during that freeze event that didn't always operate really well with all the ice conditions. And some of them, we had to go out and actually do monitor them by site. So you crawl up a frozen tank to look down and make sure it's got water, and it's a little bit challenging for the operator, so we've, we've addressed that. And then the well runs. We've noticed over the years that when our water temperature in the, in the lake gets below about 50 degrees, somewhere in the mid-50s, and when I say the lake, this is Nemets Lake on the river, when we pump that cold water into our system, we have a lot of main breaks. And so what we've done is implemented a strategy where we use well water. It's about 70 degrees, 70, 70, some odd degrees in there. It heats up the pipes and they don't break as easily, so another lesson learned there. On the wastewater side, this is where we talked about the generators, purchasing of the additional generators down to handle some of those lift stations we have a grant for. I believe it's 15 across the city, a lot of them are going to go to Public Works for the different lift stations. So, we also have two valvines ready to be deployed. If the lift station's offline and it's starting to overfill, then we can go out there and, you know, pump that, pump those lift station. Early planning for flood events. If we're gonna, if we anticipate any flooding, we know there's some low-wiring water lines that we, what we go out and verify, check and see if there's anything that we can do to help protect them from the flood event. And then the staging of heavy equipment to deploy. Around, around the city, the street department may leave loaders where they know it's going to be close to a low-water area or something, or barricades where we need to have stuff that we're going to close those streets. In a nutshell, there's, there's more that we've done, but they limited me to, they didn't limit me. I limited myself, because I thought that would be enough. If you have any questions or you want to see some more of it, please let me know, we will be happy to give it to you.
Thank you, Stuart. We kind of skimmed over it pretty quickly, but we have had a significant amount of interaction with TechStot since the last two winter storms. As you know, given the topography that we have along I-10 and the heavy truck traffic, that has been an issue that has popped up in both of the freezing highway conditions we had along that interstate. And so, we're continuing to work with them within the operational protocols that they have to meet, along with federal guidelines on interstate traffic, but we are trying to make sure that that is the best situation, that we can, can have that and TechStot can have that, because it is a significant issue, as you all know.
Afternoon, Mayor and Council. Okay, Parks and Recreation, so similar to the other departments and divisions, we did also order additional generators through the grant program. We assist with social media and community education platforms, and we have our own Facebook page, and we monitor and run the city's Instagram page. We also update and manage our website, particularly our pages specifically for the Kerrville Shrinar Park customers, that we have the information that's live for them. Our department's responsible for preparing city facilities, sidewalks, things of that nature, ice melt, winterizing fountains, prepping all of the Parks and Recreation areas in winterizing as well, ensuring Kerrville Shrinar Park customers are safe and have the appropriate accommodations. For example, if we know we have folks that are tent camping and we have severe weather, we'll contact them, either move them inside to the rec hall or a mini cabin, or find other accommodations for them. We purchase chains for our vehicles as well, and are planning for upgraded fleet vehicle purchasing for 4i4 vehicles to be able to move around town. If you recall, our department was also deployed in the last winter storm with assisting streets and getting water to customers. Ensuring our inventory and equipment is stocked and ready, ice melt for ice events, things for heat waves for our staff, making sure we have plenty of water, Gatorades, things like, and that nature. We're prepared to deploy and assist streets and other departments as needed. We're on standby 24/7, and we are often working out in the streets hand-in-hand with, with them as well. Closing parks and facilities as appropriate. We installed gates at the Lehman and Rose side of Luis Hayes Park to make sure that when we have flooding events or other events to where we need to close that park, we're able to do so now with the gates. Assist with citizen sheltering, so our department falls under that annex. So if we have to provide for mass shelters, we're the department lead for that. Storm cleanup and debris management, and we also do post storm facility and asset inspections. Some of this is a crossover between what we've already done and in addition to what we are doing as lessons learned from the last couple of storms. So, we have a lot on our list. Up next, I believe, will be the city garage.
From the garage standpoint, one of the things that, as a lesson learned, is to get the additives that we can add to the generators, so the fuel doesn't freeze up during those cold winter events. And so that's one of the things that we're looking into and have on stock at the garage itself. The other thing that we did is we actually got cell phones for all the staff members, so that they have it on, on hand, available to them at any given time during those events, because sometimes they get called out 24/7, depending on the situation. And so we wanted to extend that reach out to all of our staff members. And of course, the biggest thing is fuel. One of the big things is we want to make sure everybody has access to fuel. And so we worked with Maxi, who's our current fuel vendor. They have two locations on-site within the city that staff can go get, get fuel. And one of the fuel stations will get, actually shut down and only give us access to it, so that the fuel is readily available only for us. So that's one of the things that we were able to get. And then also, Maxi has agreements with two other companies in San Antonio to continue to provide fuel to the city as they need it. Those are the things that we've done with garage.
Speaking real quickly on finance, over to Chief McCall. So with finance, some of the things for me that, that we continue to work on is identifying expenses or grants for inclement weather response and preparedness. There's the generators that we were able to kind of secure, which is great, to actually purchase for the wells and actually for even the fire station. And then managed the financials and record-keeping for potential FEMA and disaster declaration reimbursement. We've really learned that during winter storm Uri, a lot of the record-keeping, what we need to do for emergency management is early, so it happens in the emergency operations center. All those expenses, everything we're doing out there has to be tracked and has to be recorded, and so we did make a few changes to that in emergency operations center.
At the police department, we, the first thing on there is generator for our police department, we actually got that just two months prior to Uri, and it was very timely for us to be able to stand up REOC and manage that event. We've purchased chains for our patrol cars to allow us to move around the city more freely, and we've equipped officers for both cold and wet weather with cold and wet weather uniforms that we were lacking in, in some instances. We've changed our vehicle assignment policy to allow for a quicker response from throughout the city. And our new utility body worn camera system, it is run by a platform called Polaris, and it provides real-time weather updates and resource tracking within the vehicle, so they can see where other officers are, they can see any weather updates that are coming through, and warnings pop up on there as well, automated warnings pop up if we have weather events that are approaching that they need to be aware of. Our utility Polaris system also provides us the ability to geofence hazardous response conditions for officers, and depending if that's flooding, we can denote areas that are flooded, so as our officers start moving into that area, they'll get an automated message in their, in their unit and across their body camera that tells them, you know, whatever that hazard may be, so that we're able to avoid that. As well as our dispatch, we mentioned our radio upgrade, Insider Dispatch Center, we've also upgraded our, our communications there. We've also upgraded our, our communications there and a lot of our processes in how we handle emergencies such as our weather-related events. We also were involved, you've heard several folks talk about the Tech Dot prep meetings, we were also involved with that and looking at from a law enforcement response perspective and feel like we have a much better plan in place and feel a lot more confident in Tech Dot's response on the interstate, on our state highways that affect our city.
For the fire EMS, one of the things that we identified during winter storm Uri is that Fire Station 3 is on that dedicated electric feed to the Curville VA Hospital. So, so that was definite benefit there. Staff and repurposed our brush truck for snow and ice responses. So we, we learned that that truck can get to places where we cannot in our regular ambulances or engines. So we staff those during emergencies. We purchased two additional floor heaters. We purchased additional floor heaters and large floor fans for all the stations during power outages. Atmos has now installed natural gas to Fire Station Number 3, so they brought that over from Jennings to the front of Fire Station 3. And so now we have installed a natural gas heaters at our fire station. We have very small electric heaters and it was not, it was not adequate when the temperatures got into the single digits and we had to have another heater in the bay so our pump didn't freeze on our engine. We have, we're installing spare electric bay heater in Harper Station. That's where our technical rescue team is over there on, by Starky Elementary. And so we didn't, we just had a floor heater before, but when they get into the single digits, so we're able to utilize, since we have natural gas at Station 3, we pulled that electric one and we're going to be installing that over there.
You have people housed at the, the Harper Station?
So we will during emergencies, our technical rescue team, so that is equipped for them to actually be able to be staffed over there for, for quick deployment.
Okay.
We have added floor heater and window heaters to Harper Station. Of course, we had some issues there. We have now, in the process, we've created a wildland response team in response to the recent fires and the wildfires that we had locally and regionally. And we're currently working on that, which a little bit has to do with our six by six. We have purchased two replacement vehicles with four-wheel drive, so we're currently in the process of that, just waiting a little bit for delivery. Fire Department, other things we're working on right now, so that generator grant, one of the things we have replaced, that we're going to replace the generator at Central Fire Station, not that big, so 150 kilowatt, not a, not 1,500, that probably would power that side of town. So, but it will power the entire station, so now we have one station, including Station 3, but we do have one, one station that could manage if we had to bring personnel there. We're upgrading our generators at our substations to power what we learned during winter storm Uri. Our bay heaters, they're natural gas, but the igniter's not. So we didn't have the electric igniter in there, so we had to work through that. So now we're going to be able to power our bay heaters, our bay doors, some of our bay doors did not work, and additional outlets inside. We are now currently seeking donations to purchase a six by six ATV. So we are currently with a donation that we anticipate. I believe we're sitting right about $48,000, so we are $12,000 from our goal. And so some exciting stuff coming up that hopefully we're going to be closing that gap early February. So we're working with a local to do a fundraiser. We are purchasing chains for specific emergency response vehicles, not ambulances, but our other command vehicles. And we're working to replace our generator at Fire Station Number 3 with a larger natural gas generator from IT that is going to be repurposed over there for us. So in general, so this is your, these are the mitigation actions that we've taken over the last two years off the different, different events that we've seen as, as your team. And so one of the things we do through the notification process, and it's very generalized, is that we have the initial weather notification with the National Weather Service, so some event coming in. This team is notified, who you saw today, they will receive notification either through email or through RAVE, it depends what time it is. Emergency operations, so we determine our readiness level and we will disseminate a situation report. So we will put out some of those basic informations and allow each of the departments to fill in what they're doing out there for this weather, whether it be snow, ice, hailstorm coming, whatever it may be. Each department will then initiate specific task and operational changes based on the weather, based on the situation report and the information we're getting. Public will be notified as they inclement weather as appropriate. And then we'll continue to monitor situation every 12 to 24 hours. So, so why do we bring this up? One of the things I think I said earlier is that history repeats itself. Sometimes maybe it doesn't repeat itself, but it does run. So I think that's one of the things we'll see that we're going to have other events. We've had two that have been in February. We're a week away from last year's winter storm landing. I, I love Texas and you never know what's coming, so, but we're prepared. And I think the biggest thing that we want to let you all know, our inclement weather team, what we have, what we have achieved over the last two years and been able to do through some mitigation actions for some gaps out there. And we're prepared, we're prepared to respond to the emergencies, so.
One question that I have.
Question for anyone, so.
We seem to scramble a little bit last year with having adequate shelter for some of the people that were displaced during those storms. And I mean, do we, you know, I know that we've been, we had been utilizing some churches and stuff for that. Do we have any kind of partnership with them? Or what are we doing this year to prepare for the influx of those who may need shelter?
We do. So we've, our sheltering operations is part of the emergency management plan and we've identified some local churches and/or Shriners University to assist in that. Currently what we do, we wanted to do Salvation Army. So early on, we'll contact them, see what kind of numbers they're seeing, what their availability is for that. After that, we have two churches specifically, which are on dedicated lines, the Methodist Church and Calvary Temple. Calvary Temple will go into the VA, Methodist Church going into the hospital. So, so that provided outstanding, Methodist Church, they're a phone call from providing it. Pastor Payne helps us out pretty quickly and they set that up and so will on the Palmer's over there also if, if we needed it. But usually we monitor, we contact them early. The last one we had in December, we contacted, we made them aware and we were, Salvation Army was able to handle it, so we did not open the one right before Christmas. So, but, but we do contact them early. So as a city and the county also.
Number two, we have varying degrees of shelter needs depending on the emergency. Sometimes it's warming stations that are more needed.
Right.
Sometimes, remember, we are a sister county with San Patricio County. And so when we deal with hurricane events, we get an influx of folks that are coming from that area that are seeking shelter and we have to open up mass shelters and we do partner with various agencies to do that. So it really kind of depends on what type of emergency we're facing and what that's, we try to scale that up or scale that down, but we do, we've got great partnerships with folks out there.
All righty.
Other questions?
That's all, anyone else? Thank you all.
Thank you.
It's good stuff and makes me feel good, so we appreciate it.
Thank you.
All right, we will move now to, to A, Curville Economic Development Corporation update. And I believe our presenters are here. Gil, Katie, come on in.
Oh, this is new.
It's just displayed.
Yeah, they're all right.
Don't touch it, Gil.
Getting ready to.
What is it, what is new?
There's a screen here. But it's, it's black.
The one that we're looking at?
Squint so far.
Yeah.
The far screen.
So, and I've got a problem with that. Brought my notes, so. Okay, Mayor, members of the council, for our quarterly presentation today, I'm going to be talking about our strategic plan and some of the recommendations that came out of that as far as the stakeholder retreat and some of the meetings that we had last year leading up to this. That was hosted by TIP Strategies out of Austin, those are economic development consultants. So I'm going to start with, with the State of the City address. Kind of like the recurring theme was, you know, there's construction everywhere. And, you know, and that makes me happy and that's something that I've always enjoyed. And a lot of it was credited to the 2050 plan being a major driver behind it. I loved when the mayor said that, you know, this is a plan that's not sitting on the shelf. It's something that we're actually executing because that's kind of embodies what the KADC does, you know, we go out there and we execute. The city manager also followed, followed up by saying, you know, it's not a coincidence, it's no accident that you're seeing all this activity out there. There's a lot of work that went into this. And, you know, we put ourselves in that category as far as being some of the doors out there and being behind that growth as well. Not all of it, but at least a part of it. So as far as the plan for the organization, you know, we'll be talking about some of the housing stuff, childcare, some of the skills alignment as far as the ability to recruit talent for cities our size, and then the changing environment. And obviously the post, the pandemic had a huge part in that. And then some of the focus areas that pertains to this plan, that's marketing and branding, some of the anchor institutions that we have here as well as the existing workforce, and then the true strength or power of an economic development organization, which is being a community convenor. So I'll start with number one, that's marketing and branding. And again, that's proposing a, to develop a multi-year plan, which we kind of did, you know, three years ago, four years ago, as far as business, but this one would be very focused with business and then talent attraction. Marketing to some of the community workers, and I'll be touching on that here in a bit, and as well as some of the graduates that are leaving our area. And then leveraging some of the local events, for instance, a folk festival is, continues to be a huge event that's branded Curville for a long time, using that to promote this is a place to live, work, or run your business from. Consultants came back and said, you know, here's a case study that you should consider looking at, which is Tampa Bay Hillsboro EDC. They had a campaign that was very specific to millennial job seekers as well as millennial job owners, job owners, business owners. So, you know, they've got a couple of universities there, so it's trying to kind of cast a net out there and recruit back some of the millennials that went to school there or some of the vacationers as well. And then they do that through tracking, both through social media and then promoting through social media as well. So we'll be borrowing some of their ideas. What I like about this is I know the actual, the person that runs EDC there in Tampa, before that he was in, in Atlanta, and then before that he was in Arlington. And he's a very outside the box thinker to, so much so that he's the one that actually put the deal together for the Cowboy Stadium in Arlington 15 years ago. Number two is anchor institutions. So Curville has had, has a great opportunity with some of the institutions that we have in the area. Obviously, we've got the, the university for a community our size, that's huge, as well as Alamo Colleges, which is out of San Antonio, but then also James Avery. We've got, you know, now we've got Killdeer, Gulf Avionics, also say Mooney. Mooney continues to be a anchor institution. And then the HEB Foundation, I mean, that's huge for our area. And I know you all have seen that commercial that, well.
Spilling B.
It's, it's, you know, came out during the Super Bowl. Fantastic, doing our job for us. But again, these are some power hitting organizations for this community. So it's working with them and addressing some of the challenges alongside with them, looking at some very sector-specific as far as like, it could, could be aerospace, cybersecurity, soft technical skills, really looking at some of those talent initiatives, and then hosting some of the forums that we've been doing already, but just taking it to a different level. And then with our existing workforce, and Katie will be touching on that here in a bit, who's done a fantastic job as far as addressing that, identifying a part of the population that is unemployed or underemployed. So remember, we have one of the lowest unemployment rates in the state of Texas. So our job now is to figure out who's not working and why are they not working out of that 2% to 3% of the population. And then working with some of the schools, actually working with some of the nonprofits to connect some of these work-ready people, see how we can bring them back into the workforce. And then looking at internships and apprenticeships between education and the private sector. And actually, last weekend, me and myself, we're working with a local company that's requiring that, so we're working with them as well as the school district in the state of Texas and developing an apprenticeship program, again, to, to work with their challenges. Katie will be talking about the childcare initiatives, which again, that's, that goes in this category as far as who's not working and why are they not working, and that's going to help us bring some people back online. The other one is being a community convenor. So I've always liked to say that the true power of an economic development organization, it's not about how much money, in this case not us, but any IC would have, or sales tax revenue. It's not about your access to funds at the state or at the federal level or your ability to close deals, so on and so forth. It's about the power of convening, which is bringing the right people together at the table to address, you know, an initiative or a challenge that your low, one of your companies is facing, or when you're recruiting a prospect. In this case, we actually are doing that right now, convening several of our stakeholders. We've got a major company visiting that next week. And again, it's our job to bring, you know, some of you have been involved in some of these in the last few years. So again, it's, it's being able to, to meet with them and help us receive that company in our community, earn their trust, and at the end of the day, you know, collectively help them invest in our community. That's the true power of an economic development organization, so we're actually doing it right now. So that's what a community convenor is. And again, being the voice for some of our large employers, and especially in this case as it pertains to attracting talent and retaining some of the workers. Okay, so this is what I like to say where the rubber meets the pavement. You know, the consultants came back with some of these recommendations and some of these things we're already working on. But this is the one that really took us back a little bit. So our population grew from 2009, 2010 to about 2019, 2020. Obviously, the pandemic happened and that put a dent into that. So our population slowed down, but our job creation increased by a lot, and then our labor shed increased as well.
What is labor shed?
Labor shed is the area from which workers come into your community to work. So obviously, Houston metro area has like 20 counties that they pull from. Dallas-Fort Worth is like 30-plus counties. San Antonio's actually a little smaller because it's, there's not a lot of cities around it. So that's, that's what the labor shed is. And so what we found out was that our civilian workforce, workforce actually declined in Curville. Our population increased, but the civilian workforce decreased. However, there's more jobs here today than in the history of Curville. I mean, there's so many jobs now and there's more companies that are looking to come into the community. And that's the first thing that we tell the companies, you know, access to workers is going to be a challenge, but they still want to be a part of this area. However, the difference from four, can't believe it's four plus years ago when I got here today is there's a lot more people that are driving in from out of town, outside the county to work in Curville than when I first got here, let's just say five years ago. So it might be hard to see the numbers in this graph, but there's almost 10,000 people driving into Curville on a daily basis to work here. There's about 5,000 plus that are leaving the county to work. And there's 4,100 people who live in Curville and work in Curville. So that's what kind of like, made us take a step back and be kind of like, okay, there's, there's, this is, this is a trend. I've been here long enough now to say this is an actual trend and a pattern that we need to be conscious of. So what that now means is, as you can see in this map here, you know, obviously the dark spot, that's where, you know, Curville people live and work in. But as you can see, our labor shed has really grown to about a 10-county area. We've got people driving in, you know, from San Marcos and New Braunfels. Distance-wise, it's not that far, but I've driven it. It takes about an hour to, to get here, coming in for a good paying job here. Northwest, north and northwest San Antonio, we've got, you know, you can see there, there's, there's quite a few people coming in from that area now. quite a few people coming in from that area now. So there's a huge cluster there. Our labor shed has grown. So for local companies, that means, okay, so you can get employees. Now you just have to, kind of when I said marketing, now you have to market and promote outside of the area to get those people to apply for your jobs. And we can help with that. However, that's kind of like a band-aid. That's a, that's not a sustainable model. Ultimately, what we want and what we're working on is having those people living in our community, try to reverse that trend. We just need that civilian workforce number to really increase. You know, the city's taken a, you know, great lead as far as working on some of these housing developments, you know, attainable housing, which, you know, we like to say, letting our homes coming in, working with them is already starting to pay dividends because they're getting calls, we're getting calls in our office from other developers that want to come in and develop in the area. So, so it's, it's, we're seeing it, it's happening. But in the words of one of, you know, a couple of our local, large employers, you know, they said, you know, we know that there's more housing and there's more people coming into the community. It just can't happen fast enough. We need the employees today. So it's a process. We're moving in that direction. It's just a little bit slower than we want it to be. So with that, I will introduce Katie Milton-Jordan. She's our newest addition. We'll wait for questions after her presentation. She's our newest addition to the team. She's been here almost four months, actually. She's originally from Minnesota. She's about three generations in as far as entrepreneurs and, you know, families, you know, part of the family has run several businesses. She's actually a business and executive coach and an intelligence coach too. So that kind of worries me, I'm like, oh my God. It's like whenever I talk to her, like, am I being intelligent or not? So, and before the KEDC, she was with a Texas Buyers Company here in Curville. She's been here long enough now that she calls herself a Curville resident native, I guess. So with that, I'll have Katie do her part.
Thank you, Gil. Good afternoon, not a mayor and council members. This is my first time running one of these. My car isn't this fancy. But yeah, so I'll be talking about the initiatives that we've been taking in the childcare focus area. And I first want to bring your attention to this timeline that illustrates to you what we've done recently, what we're currently in the middle of doing and what our projections are coming forward. So as Gil mentioned, I joined the KEDC in October. And in November, we formed a childcare working group made up of several community leaders and stakeholders who have special interest and special knowledge of this area. And it was our intent to meet for three very specific meetings over a specific duration of a timeline in order to be able to define the challenges, analyze the challenges, and seek out some creative solutions. And so we had our first working group meeting in December. It was our first one of three. After that meeting, I also attended a Texas Workforce Commission Alamo Town Hall. They brought childcare centers, center directors together for a community town hall to talk about what are some of the challenges that the center directors are facing? What are some of their asks? What can we do as a community to help them deliver increased capacity in childcare? I also was able to go to Austin, Texas and had a meeting with Commissioner Demerson and was able to speak with him about the challenges that we're experiencing here in Curville in childcare. They were able to connect me with some resources on the state level. So I have had a variety of meetings with folks at the state level, better understanding what those tools are and how we can leverage them as a community. As a side note, I did, we invited Commissioner Demerson here to Curville in quarter one and he accepted our invite. So we expect him to be here in March and we will get more details to you guys as they become available, but we're looking forward to hosting him here in our community. After that, we hosted a meeting here at City Hall with childcare center directors. And again, we were able to get more information from them on how they're operating, what their challenges are, what their, what their needs are, how we can support them going forward. And then we had our second of three childcare working group meetings where I shared the information with our childcare working group, what we had found, received recommendations from the folks that were on the working group committee and made a plan of attack for what are our next steps, who's going to take which assignments, how are we going to roll this out, what, what else, what information is missing yet? Then we had, I had another visit in Austin where I met with some specific folks in the TWC to better understand the different programs that they have. And if you guys have done any research into the TWC at all, navigating their programs can sometimes be a little bit of a challenge. They'll put one thing in one category and another thing in another, another category. And you really need to find the experts that know exactly how that weaves together so that you can leverage it for maximum, maximum benefit. So if you'll see the, the stuff highlighted in green, those are the items that have yet to be completed. Right now, I'm in the middle of having one-on-one phone calls and face-to-face meetings with the directors and the childcare centers that have expressed interest or willingness to expand or start up or, or take on a new project here in Curville so we can increase our capacity. I had four of those phone calls yesterday. I probably have another four of those phone calls coming up. And I hope to complete those before our final working group meeting that I'd like to schedule in February. Once I have our final working group meeting, the, the childcare working group will provide some recommendations to the community about how they believe we should proceed in light of the information that we've gathered. And it's my hope to take those final recommendations and plans to Austin one more time and to partner with these community businesses as they navigate the next steps of increasing childcare capacity in our community. We do have a bit of a deadline for some of the programs that are offered on the state level and they are meant to be ending this fall. And so we are doing our best to work as quickly as possible so that we don't run out of the, the time that we need to leverage those tools. Through this research, I, we have identified five possible expansions of current centers. We have identified three to four possible startups. And it is our goal to strengthen the workforce by 100 jobs. So a little summary for you guys about what the care centers, the feedback that the care centers have been giving us is that when I interviewed the care center directors, they're saying that there is some possibility for increased capacity, but it's extremely limited. And I think that we probably know this anecdotally because we're aware of the waiting list that exists at almost all centers. But yeah, it, it appears that almost every center that we have in town is at max capacity. 100% of the centers that we interviewed reported staffing as their number one challenge. So it's, it's interesting that, that we're, we're, we're doing this childcare initiative in order to be able to find more staff for the workforce. And the childcare centers themselves are reporting that that is also their number one challenge. Their next asks were after staffing, they were requesting space, more space so that they could expand and specialty equipment so that they could bring new services to the children and families that they serve. Two of the 14 centers that we interviewed are for-profit and almost all of them are nonprofit. Anecdotally, they report business model challenges and small profit margins. So that's something else that we are looking into in the childcare working group. One of the centers is currently taking advantage of the free business coaching that is offered by the Texas Workforce Commission. They just enrolled in that program less than 30 days ago, but we're looking forward to more feedback from them on how that experience goes. And we hope to enroll even more of our childcare centers in this community into that free coaching program. Almost all of the childcare centers have increased their pay in the last year from, up from $9 to $12 an hour. And it seems that Fredericksburg centers are paying about $15 an hour across the board. Some of their specific asks include staff, space, and equipment, more community support. Again, this is to be defined and needs, we need some more clarity there. They were specifically asking for centrally located information on childcare for parents and for directors. They were requesting shared services model and grant writing courses or grant writer to help them leverage some of the tools that they don't have the bandwidth to, to entertain at this time. So here are some of the recommendations that are being discussed in the childcare working group. Again, we are having conversations with the chamber on similar organizations to spearhead something that we're, we're calling a childcare alliance. That name may change as it evolves, but I think that it illustrates what we're trying to achieve is that it's an alliance. But we would ideally like this organization to help get that program momentum, help bring some additional resources to the center directors. Ideally, we'd offer one, one-year free membership to the childcare center. And it would also provide our local chamber or another similar organization with the centrally located information that they need when newcomers come to our community and they're looking for a list of where can I bring my child to, you know, early childhood education, where are the daycare centers, who do I need to talk to to get enrolled in these programs? This is a question that the chamber is being asked regularly. And so that's why it became a suggested partnership. I believe that the chamber also has the ability to introduce the childcare alliance to a grant writer or recruit a grant writer and could also possibly make strategic introductions. For example, an insurance representative that might be able to help childcare centers organize so that they can do a group program for all, all childcare centers. Another recommendation that is being discussed is matching childcare centers with employers or a consortium of employers for mutual benefit. Again, the childcare centers are, are telling us they're really great at taking care of kids, but they experience weaknesses when it comes to business model or financial planning. And so there could be some mutual benefit there with the business owners needing staffing and the childcare center directors needing a, a business mentor. We are talking about partnering with centers in order to leverage some of the funding tools that are offered by the state. One of them does require an employer match. So we're working hard to try to make some of those matches. The KEDC is looking at collaborating with some partner organizations like Texas, Texas Workforce, Alamo to create a childcare business incubator that would offer some education and resources to some of the startups that have expressed interest in moving forward with, with childcare. KEDC is also looking to collaborate with partner organizations to more fully develop a childcare apprenticeship program. For example, I've had conversations with Ingram ISD. They have a really amazing P-Tech program and we think that this path could easily be woven into their education apprenticeship path. And with that, I'll open it up to questions and feedback.
You've been busy.
Yeah.
Good. Counsel?
So is there like 14 facilities here in Curville? Is that what I understood?
That's not a definitive number. There are a variety of different resources that are giving us differing data. And so what we're trying to do is we're trying to collect as much information as we can, but the definitive number is not 14. I believe that it's greater than that.
Okay. And how, how much percentage-wise was your participation in, in this kind of roundtable thing that, that you had?
Are you talking about the childcare working group or the interviews with the centers?
No, 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 the, the childcare working group.
The childcare working group was a very, the group was strategically formed for speed and stakeholders that represent different community members. And so the childcare working group wasn't something that we opened up to the community. So that was strategically formed with some key leaders.
And then what about the other?
With the, with the care centers, I sent out, I partnered with Julie, who works in finance here at the city. She's got a background in childcare. And the two of us have kind of done a grassroots campaign to try to reach out to these childcare center directors to make sure that everybody knows what we're doing and has an opportunity to be involved. So she used her network to reach out to the childcare centers in her network and invite them to the community town halls. Texas Workforce Alamo did the same thing with their networking connections. And I also found a list online of all the childcare centers that are in our region. And so I called every single person on the list. There were a handful of them where the phone number was disconnected or folks didn't answer, but we left voicemails in our best efforts to try to make sure that everybody is included.
Anyone else? Other questions, comments? All right.
I'll, I'll add to what Katie was saying. So they interviewed the, the majority of the childcare centers. And her coming in, this was a business coach, part of her said, we're going to have three, we're not going to call this a committee, we're going to call this a working group. So that was one. The other one was, we're only going to have three meetings, 90 minutes each meeting. We're going to have action items. And by the end of the third meeting, we've already at least gotten close to coming up with some kind of a resolution. So they're in their second meeting, going into their third, and they're, they're pretty much there.
Okay.
Well, we appreciate it and look forward to whatever comes. That's great. All right.
We're excited. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. Thank you both. Appreciate your being here.
Thank you.
All right. I believe that it's executive session time and.
Here, we don't have, we won't have any update for our executive session for today. So we'll be able to skip that item for today.
Okay. Very good. Then at 5:05, we will adjourn the council workshop.
What are they doing? Never had a whole.
I know.